Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, great. Thank you.
We have a delay on the phone.
All right, great, thank you. So I guess we will start with the agenda for the special emergency board of selectmen meeting in response to the COVID-19 pandemic for today at 1:00. And for those of you watching at home, there will not be any public comment at this meeting today, which is not typically what we have for a special emergency meeting. But at the end of the meeting, for those in the audience, we do have people here that will be an opportunity just to ask questions. So moving forward, the first item on the agenda is relating to discuss and take action to postpone until further notice the following public hearings and special town meetings. March 23rd, 2020, public hearing to discuss the 2018 Small Cities Community Development Block Grant and a special appropriation request in the amount of $102,080 to fund health and transportation services for Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy. B, March 23rd, 2020, special town meeting to approve a special appropriation request in the amount of $65 from the Board of Education to fund the public schools' external placements for Special Education Reserve Fund and a special appropriation request in the amount of $81,000 to fund transportation services for Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy. C, March 30th, 2020, public hearing on a lease modification agreement between the Town of Madison and Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy. And D, April 2nd, 2020, special town meeting to approve a resolution on a lease modification agreement between the Town of Madison and Our Lady of Mercy Preparatory Academy. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. Okay.
Just a quick discussion on this?
Yep.
So do we need to do these independently or do we do them as grouping? It's okay?
You can do them as a grouping, like in this instance. When you call them again, we're going to have to call them individually. When we pick the date that we're postponing them to or moving them to, then those will be individually.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just so for the public's background, these are different public hearings and town meetings that had been called by the board previously before obviously we entered into this emergency situation. And given the fact that town meetings in particular require people to gather in public and vote, you know, it would obviously, in our current situation, not be prudent to host a large town meeting where people would be showing up and voting in public. So the idea right now is we're going to postpone these. And Floyd, if that's you, you might want to mute. Okay? So, and basically because we're going to have to figure out exactly how going forward that we can kind of take action on these and have these town meetings, the governor has come out with an executive order lifting some of the requirements of having public hearings, but we still have a lot to work through how we're going to make that happen. Luckily, the town has the technology, the live stream, but town meetings in particular require people to show up and vote. So we have to find out and get more guidance from the governor about how we would address doing that. So there'll be more, the board will get together and work through this as kind of some of these new executive orders come out of Hartford. Any comments or discussion from other board members on the postponement of these public hearings and special town meetings?
Thank you, this is Bruce.
Yep.
So I think this is just an opportune time to say to the public that we're really coming at this from two major vectors. And somebody on the call has got a lot of bad words going on. Maybe they could ask them to mute it?
There you go.
There we go, that's much better. That's much better. We have the challenge of the continuity of municipal government, the day-to-day operations of government, and then we have the legislative body challenge that you've just referred to. And I think it's important that everybody understand that we're not trying to take away anybody's voice in the legislative process, that we are taking the more conservative step of just pausing that process while we figure out how best to proceed. So I support this motion. I just think that it's something that we need to reassure the public about.
No, I think that's a very good point, Bruce, because I think that, you know, we're going to have to figure out a lot of different things. We have other public hearings scheduled regarding the budget towards the end of April. A lot of things that we need to think through to make sure that we don't disrupt government from operating, and we try to keep to our timelines as much as we can. These in particular, because they were coming up in the next two weeks, I think the board felt, you know, that it was important that at least we give public adequate notice to understand that, you know, we don't feel comfortable calling members of the public to a town meeting for a vote, given the circumstances we're in currently. But very, very good point, Bruce. And, you know, we are kind of, you know, learning this as we go and trying to figure out the best way forward so that good decisions are made and that we allow the public the opportunity to weigh in on important decisions. Erin, any thoughts on your end?
No, I mean, I echo the same thoughts and that, you know, I think we may have sort of say that it's something that a lot of towns are wrestling with. And I know, is it the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities? Is that the correct name of the organization?
CCM, yep.
Yeah, it's working with the governor's office on these issues that all these towns are facing, particularly with regards to votes on budget. So.
Yeah, and.
I think we have to.
Yeah, no, I think.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I was going to say, agree that the, there might be further guidance coming out about delaying timelines and things like that, but we're just in a situation now, we just don't know, you know, what's that, what that's going to look like and when that's going to occur.
Right.
I've heard the words abundance of caution too, so.
Yeah.
We're practicing social distancing, but we're also using abundance of caution. So I think it's smart.
All right. Any other comments, Al? No? Okay. So all in favor of the, I have to read the whole thing again, of postponing the further, the following public hearings and special town meetings, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, great. Okay. Next item on the agenda is discuss and take action to declare local civil preparedness emergency.
So I will make a motion, if you're okay, to adopt the declaration of local civil preparedness emergency. And I will read it as such. I think we don't have it for the public right now, so I will read it and maybe we'll post it. Whereas the Board of Selectmen do find, number one, that the recent pandemic of COVID-19 disease associated with the new form of coronavirus has led to a growing number of infections in Connecticut and in neighboring states, shortages of supplies needed to address and prevent the disease, and public health officials' recommendations to limit meetings in large groups and practice social distancing. And, number two, that Governor Lamont on March 10th, 2020 made a declaration of statewide public health emergency and civil preparedness emergency. And, number three, that President Trump on March 13th, 2020 made a declaration of national emergency. And, number four, that due to the above, the Town of Madison needs to be prepared to take emergency measures in order to preserve and protect the public health, public safety, general welfare, peace, and security of the Town of Madison, its residents, and property. And, number five, that due to such conditions and risks, it is necessary to declare a local civil preparedness emergency. Now, therefore, under the authority of Chapter 28 of the Connecticut General Statutes and Sections 10.1.3 and 4.1.4 of the Madison Town Charter, it is hereby declared that a local civil preparedness emergency now exists throughout the Town of Madison. And it is further declared and ordered that during this existence of said emergency, the first selectwoman shall exercise those powers, functions, and duties prescribed by state law, the Town Charter, and all applicable ordinances, resolutions, special acts, and the Town Emergency Operations Plan in order to minimize the effects of said emergency, effective immediately upon enactment and automatically repealed 21 days.
Floyd on the line.
21 days following the effective date thereof in accordance with the Town Charter, Section 10 dot 1 dot 3. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. Open for discussion?
That was a mouthful.
Yeah, that's a long declaration. And I think I just want to assure the public that all we're doing is taking a step that is required by our Town Charter. And right now, we have a national emergency, we have a state emergency, and our particular charter requires that the board vote to declare a local emergency. Some towns don't need to do this. It automatically follows what the state, what the governor does. Our charter requires a specific action to be taken. It will, you know, allow us to more operational flexibility in case we need to take specific needs quickly and swiftly in order to protect the safety and well-being of the community. And it also opens us up and available to federal emergency funds that the president had announced on Friday. So all of this just sets the stage for us to move forward and make good decisions for the residents and just aligns us with kind of how we've been operating already, but it kind of checks the box now that we've cleared a hurdle through our own charter. So any other questions or discussions on this?
I'd just like to remind the public that this isn't the first time we've done something like this. My memory tells me that during a recent hurricane event, so in the last decade, and at least one snow event, we, the Board of Selectmen, also declared a temporary state of emergency.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the point that we want to reinforce with everybody is we're here to protect and ensure that everybody's safety is the utmost priority for the town. So I think at the end of the day, that's exactly what we're trying to do here, is streamline town government in order to protect and serve.
Floyd, was that a comment you needed to make or?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if, I know everybody knows Al, but just for clarity of purpose, when somebody speaks, if you could just identify yourself. I know it's going to be a little awkward, but complying with the freedom of information and the advisory we've seen, I think that's what we should be doing.
Good advice.
Okay, good advice, Floyd. And just so you're aware, Floyd, we're actually live streaming this meeting now, so public has access to it, live streamed. So, I don't know, Bruce or Erin, any other comments you'd like to make?
Yes. Well, I just wanted to, I think it would be helpful both the council and perhaps the public too, just to have a clear understanding. And maybe Floyd, you could, this is Erin, by the way, you could give some insight about what this, what specifically gives the authority of, allows Peggy to do in her capacity at first level and what she's not able to do. I mean, I understand generally that there are things that, you know, we need this in order to be able to do certain things, but just like if you could provide us a little bit more clarity on that.
Sure. Unfortunately, both the statute and the charter are broad and vague. They don't delineate specific authority. One of the reasons that I had suggested that we consider this action is, you know, in the charter, there are certain things that the, you know, town meeting must do, certain things that the full court of selectmen must do. And there's very, very specific, prescriptive list of authority and power that the first selectman has. And the thinking that I had on this is that if the emergency powers are enacted, frankly, it gives her pretty broad and sweeping authority. So, for example, one of the questions that came up was the ability, if it was in the public interest, to cancel town meetings. And we discussed the fact, for example, that, you know, a board chair, I'm just going to use the Board of Finance as an example, they really called the meetings and so it was questionable as to whether she would have the authority to do that. So best answer I can give Erin is I think it's really very broad authority that we're talking about.
And I also.
Related to emergency management matters?
Yes.
Yeah. And are there certain things that, like, for example, Trent has sole authority to do as Director of Public Health?
Correct, correct.
And would this allow Peggy to have authority over those matters as well?
No, no, no. He would, you know, he would be in his lane, clearly, based on the authority he's given under statute. It wouldn't, she wouldn't be able to trump his authority. I think by statute, he would have very specific authority, if that's a concern.
Yeah, it's not so much a concern. I just want to make sure I clearly understand, you know, what we're holding on to.
Good clarification.
Yeah, and I think, you know, I think we see this as more, you know, if we had to actually, you know, ban town employees from coming to work and we had to close downtown hall, which is a possibility, this gives clear authority to do that. And that's what we've done in previous emergencies for snowstorms and things like that, where you could just tell people, don't come in, we're closing the operations of government. And hopefully we won't be at that point, but one of the things we'll talk about a little bit more about how we can try to provide services to the community through government while maintaining social distancing. And so that's some of the policies that we're going to be looking to be implementing going forward. And maybe it's helpful, we have our emergency management director here, Sam DeBura, who has been through this before. And, you know, Sam, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words that this is kind of normal course now where we are, given that we have a national and state emergency declared.
Let's ask people to mute their lines first.
Yeah, for those of you who are wrestling, please make sure you hit mute unless you're actually talking.
So Sam DeBura, words for you, as the director. So yeah, basically what it does is it gives you the authority without reconvening the board. If a situation came up where we had to take immediate action, we want us to, you know, take that action, not have to go back to the board to get approval, whether it's, you know, quarantining an area, curpews, so on and so forth. We're not at that point yet, but hopefully we don't get to that point. But that's really, you know, take some type of emergency action without having to reconvene the board to get approval.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
No?
Hi, Chief Drum.
Yes, Chief Drum. Are you just joining?
Yeah, no, I'm not trying to delist it. I'm going to add what Sam said. I made this decision. It's trying to make it a lot easier, streamline the process, the decision process. You have to make that decision. This is no different from small storms, Hurricane Sandy, Hurricane Storm Irene. Once the governor proceeds with his declaration, we're going to be getting our direction from the north anyway from Hartford. This is not anything unusual. This is kind of normal, this type of situation. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. So we are all board members ready to vote? Yeah? All right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, all in favor of adopting the declaration of local civil preparedness of emergency, please say aye.
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 All right, great, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to discuss business continuity planning. And this is kind of precisely why we kind of want to take some of these measures. Obviously, other communities have made the decision to actually close the doors of town government to the public. And this is a rapidly evolving situation that is, you know, every day is changing. And so we're trying to, on Friday, we made the announcement closing all nonessential kind of activities in town, in town buildings, and closing down the town gym and, you know, arts marn activities and things like that. We also closed the senior center out of a precaution for our residents and protecting our most vulnerable. And then the Board of Education closed the schools, which I think is kind of a watershed moment when you close your school district indefinitely. So I think we all recognize the severity and importance of making these decisions. And I think when we do these decisions, we're trying to learn from other communities that have already suffered from this, and we're trying to get ahead of the curve and be proactive. And I think our town has done a really good job so far of doing that. And I think our health director has done a great job at making some tough calls so far and providing advice. He's in constant contact with other communities throughout Connecticut. So we've wrestled with this a lot over the last two days about offering the public, you know, essential services that the town can provide while also minimizing their exposure as well as town employees' exposure. And so I think the thought is that what we would try to do is, and this is obviously open for discussion, and I'd like Trent to weigh in more, but we would close, we would close the town campus for public access, but allow access to essential services on an appointment-only basis. So.
I think somebody needs to mute.
Yep, somebody needs to mute. So Trent, I think it'd be helpful for just the board to get an update from you about some of the conversations you've had with other health directors in Connecticut.
All right, thanks Peggy. I'm not sure if the person has muted their phone yet, but now I'm on. So just with my conversations with other towns and cities in recent, a lot of, a lot of town buildings and facilities have been closed. The fire department, health department, and police department, they're still open to public, but also by appointment only. I also noticed that town government, municipalities have went to even different employee shifts so that they minimize the amount of staff in the building at one time. You know, I don't think we, you know, maybe we're not in that area to move in that direction right now, but yeah, I would strongly advise no public access at all, appointments only. I know we discussed the 1 to 4. I'm open to 9 to 2, you know, allow flexibility, two hours before lunch, two hours after lunch, and that can be Monday through Thursday, if we want to do it that way as well.
Okay. And I think the, we have Deb Lardo on the line as well, and Deb and I talked about this. Deb, you know, the idea here is we, obviously, there's important business that needs to continue going forward. There's regulations that have to be followed that the state has not waived so far, although there might be some more directives coming out of Hartford soon that would change that. And there's just essential needs that people have. So we don't want to limit completely the ability of our community to access government. So we're going to promote and educate people as much as possible doing things online. We actually have the ability to conduct a lot of our town business through remote access. But then we're also going to, you know, allow employees to set up specific appointments. Deb, I don't know if you want to add any thoughts on this, because I know she's been working hard, thinking through this, creates a lot of policy issues, instructions to our staff. We've been talking and thinking about this for several days now, but Deb, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, other than, I've been a proponent from the beginning of trying to balance the needs of the public and, you know, keep social distancing. I think the plan of by appointment only between the hours of 9 and 2 is very viable. It will allow us to, you know, go and reduce some staff down to just essentials. And I think that was kind of our goal from the beginning. So, you know, it is a good balance. People will be in the building, employees will be in the building, they will be able to answer phones, guide staff, set up appointments where needed, direct them to online opportunities. And we can reevaluate this really on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis.
Are we saying 1 to 4 or are we saying?
So we, yeah, we were talking about different options for that, and I think this is going to be an operational discussion about what makes sense in terms of staffing. Trent seems to be recommending, you know, 9 to 2. I think, you know, when we get off this call, we'll formalize what those hours would be. But Deb, you're comfortable with the recommendation Trent's making?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, the 9 to 2?
Right, is 9 to 2 by appointment only?
And then 2 to 4?
Yes.
Yes, and that's it. Appointment only, no open.
Right. And I just, yeah, I just wanted to add, if I can just give a general message that, you know, residents should keep in mind that, you know, these actions are being taken with an abundance of caution to protect the health of not only them, but, you know, Madison employees as well. I would like to continue to do my job and to protect the public, and I wouldn't want to be sick myself. So, you know, a lot of these facilities are closed, you know, town staff will continue to work onsite remotely, and we will be checking our voicemails, emails regularly to respond to citizen requests or inquiries as possible.
Yeah, I think the idea, go ahead, Deb.
Oh, this is Erin. I just had a question. Yeah, have the departments kind of put together a list of what's considered, you know, essential in-person services? You know, sometimes people just prefer to come in person, but maybe there's other ways to do that type of, you know, either online or mailing something in or over the phone. So do we have a sense of what we're, a general guidelines about what requires in-person?
Yeah, we did.
Interaction?
We had a senior staff meeting on Tuesday and actually discussed if we had to get to this level. And then Deb has been worked very closely with the staff to come up with that list. And so there's a lot of thought that she's put into this. I think, you know, we're going to send out notices later this afternoon on the exact hours and everything as we kind of firm this up. And then I think tomorrow morning, it'll probably gather somewhat with people sitting far apart, the senior staff again to talk about each department, maybe meet with each department and kind of nail it down better. Because part of this is also access to technology and art has been focused on who has laptops, who needs, who can work remotely, who needs to be in the office. And so he's kind of come up with a contingency plan. We've kind of rushed all the way to, you know, one of the more extremes of the contingency plan. Think how fast things have evolved just in the last, you know, 48 hours. So what was kind of, well, this, you know, we'll stage into this. We're jumping ahead a little bit more than what we even talked about on Friday. And Deb, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Erin, yes, thank you. Deb, we did, you know, I did contact through email all of the department heads as well and asked them what services their office could provide for online transaction or by mail. And all the department heads have responded. So we have a good roadmap to start with. And then putting that all together and letting the public know that these are the services that they can access, you know, via online is something we can do, you know, relatively quick for Monday.
Great. I'm already hearing questions about, you know, from the middle state attorneys and agents about recording fees and title searches and all that stuff. So.
Yeah, it's.
Sounds like that would be by appointment, sounds like, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, things we have to think about because of this. And, you know, also the waiving of any, you know, fees or fines, you know, for delinquency. You know, there's a lot of things that we're going to have to think through. And I, and I think the governor's office is now, and as Erin had talked about earlier mentioned, that they're trying to weigh into all of this. So we'll have additional guidance, but I think we have to at least let the public know how we're going to operate going forward, you know, starting Monday. And then, you know, hopefully this is just a, you know, great precaution that won't have to remain in place more than a week or two. So we'll see how things evolve.
Peggy, do we have a sense?
Peggy, can I just?
Yep. Go ahead, Trent.
Go ahead, Scott.
Do we have a sense, maybe Trent?
I just, I just wanted to, are we going to put, we should put a timeline on how long it's going to be for two weeks, or what's the date that we're enforcing it, just before the notice?
I think we should do it for two weeks, but obviously that gives us time to assess the situation more. And then. And then we would revise that policy, you know. That's, that's kind of the, what we did in terms of town buildings, other town buildings, when we sent out the modus, everybody, I think it was through March 31st. I think we could just send that out today so people can plan accordingly. And then if we have to revise it and change it further, we do so.
Okay.
That way, somebody will have an idea if they have something urgent for the following week, they know they have to make an appointment, you know? So it gives people ample time to plan, knowing that the next two weeks, that's operationally. Yep?
Can I jump in at some point?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Deb, can you?
Can you get it on the line? Sure.
Yeah, sorry, Scott had, had wanted to make a comment before, so go ahead.
I, I just, I comment a question, I guess. I'm trying to understand, and maybe Trent or Peggy or somebody can help us understand, but do we, do we have a sense of where we compare to the other shoreline towns and communities relative to this particular thinking of operational policy? I mean, we're, we're moving, on Friday, we were sort of talking about maybe some in-person hours. I just want to sort of understand how we compare to other towns and, you know, is there a possibility we're maybe pushing the envelope a little too far, too?
Well, I think we, I distributed it to the board yesterday. There's a long list of towns that have modified services, and each one is handling it in different ways. North Ranford Town Hall, closed to the public with only limited access for emergency business only. Vernon is staff report, no public allowed in. Enfield is staff report, no public allowed in. Middletown is staff report, no public allowed in. Derby is staff report, no, no public allowed in. I mean, there's West Haven, Handen, Seymour, Darien, New Canaan, Norwalk, Trumbull. Are we the first?
Milford.
Mil, yeah, pardon?
It's happening, because the point is it's happening.
Yeah, so we are alone.
Milford, Milford, Milford.
Yeah.
And those are only towns that I could easily find online yesterday.
Do we have a sense of Guilford's question, though?
I've spoken, yeah. I, I've spoken to the first selectmen in Guilford, and, I mean, they've been kind of following our lead, to be honest, a little bit. I think that we've been in constant communication. I think it's, it's a, it's a tough call, but I think that we've shown good leadership, at least in terms of taking proactive action. And if you look at this, it's, it's a domino effect, right? We're gonna be there eventually, so why not let people plan their lives accordingly and have the opportunity to know, rather than surprise them? There were situations last week where employees showed up and they couldn't get into the building, you know? So there was, communication wasn't there. So I, I think there was, you know, communication issue. So this way, at least, let's have something, you know, people will find out this afternoon and tonight, notifications will go out, they can plan their lives, they can immediately tomorrow start planning how they can do things by appointment. And, you know, they have guidance and direction about how the next week is gonna look, rather than surprising the public. I would hate to not do that. I, I was originally thinking of having just selected open hours at one point, but I think based on the guidance that Trent has provided, we're gonna get to this point anyways, let's just set up a good operating standard for our town that's more reliable and stable for the community, rather than having to change it on the fly all the time.
So just to clarify, this is Al. Townspeople would still be able to do the business they need to do with town government, either through electronic means or through the mail, or through, when I take it, or immediate appointments, appointments the community on short notice, people that need building permits or need to file things with the town.
Marriage license, something like.
So the, the business of government can carry on. Folks will, will be having to accommodate to, to this crisis. But, so this is a balanced position between closing town hall completely and, and having an unfettered continuing open town hall.
Well, and I think at the end of the day, too, we're, we're talking about protecting the public. We're also talking about protecting our employees as well. I mean, that's, that's just as important here as any, anything else. So I think we need to ensure that we're thinking about the holistic operating model.
I, I do, because I think, you know, I think, you know, I think it's important that people have access to government still. And, you know, that, but this is, is managing that social distancing a little better if you have to have an appointment versus lines of people coming in. And, you know, you might have a lot of people showing up. If we had limited hours, you might, that might encourage congregation in the building, right? By the public who are anxious about getting paperwork done quickly before town hall shuts down altogether. So, Chief, I know you were, you wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, Chief. I think people are gonna criticize, no matter what, and we're certainly gonna be criticizing what we didn't do. We have an obligation to get out in front of this, we had the opportunity, other countries have it. But we're in the mitigation phase right now. Some countries never had that opportunity, and we see, we'll show you in the national news what's going on there. I think it's imperative that we mitigate the risk, reduce the risk, reduce the exposure. Well, certainly, the most vulnerable population, but if we don't have the workers to do the job, we're gonna have a bigger problem. So I think this is sound, I think it makes sense. As of tomorrow, when Congress is done, we're gonna have another direction to take, depending on what they vote on. So this thing is very fluid, it's almost like dancing on a moving rug. But the point is that we have to make, this is true, we have to do best practices. The best practices say that, let's get out in front, you're doing the right thing.
Well, another, that's just a side question, is how does this, have we thought about temporary or part-time employees also, does this?
That's, that's a policy that we need time to sit down and formulate tomorrow morning. I mean, you know, we have summer camps that are being canceled and after-school programs. I think we need the opportunity to sit down and devise a policy. And I know Deb has spent time thinking about this, and she's got some good ideas. And I think, you know, from an operations standpoint, tomorrow, that's gonna be really what we're focusing on, how we handle that with the temporary employees, you know, what's the right practices. And Deb had mentioned to me earlier that the state is, you know, implementing certain policies for its employees, and so we might look at that as a guidance for what we decide to come up with. But it, it raises a tremendous amount of questions. You know, as, as we all know, we're in uncharted territory, so I think precaution is important, and we'll just, you know, carefully think through these decisions. Any, any other questions or comments from people on phones? Oh, okay, Sam would like to, yeah? Go ahead, Sam, we'll let Sam go.
All right, so Sam DeBura, again, emergency director, Fire Marshal. So we do offer field services, too, as far as inspections, so we have to decide how we're gonna handle those, if we're gonna send our employees out. I know these contractors that are doing big projects, we don't need inspections to keep moving, so it's gonna be a fine line as to how we handle those as well.
Absolutely, and similar with the Department Director of, Director of Health. I think each department has to think about what is mission critical and essential without putting themselves at risk. You know, right now, we're still under more social distancing guidelines, not, you know, not isolation or quarantined in our homes. So I think these are all decisions that we'll have to be making tomorrow about how we want to provide the services. I think there will also be a reduction in demand, because just as if, you know, other employers and people are, are also halting down their activities as well. So I, I would think the demand for services might be reduced. I don't know what, how contractors are gonna handle projects they've got in place right now in terms of bringing workers together, you know? And if people get sick, they might not have adequate staff to complete their project. So there's, you know, a lot here that we just don't know. Any, on the phone, I just wanted to offer opportunity, go ahead.
Yeah, Peggy, this is Bruce.
Yep.
So I think this is all been, been a good discussion. Perhaps you could just sort of wrap it up and say what your expectation is for town hall tomorrow in the next couple of days, so that people watching have an understanding of what it looks like.
Um, yeah, I think that.
Just, just a concise, concise statement, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, I, I, I think that we're gonna be sending out details of all this this afternoon. It, it, it appears that we're going to be having hours available for appointments only from nine to two, Monday through Thursday. At that, most businesses will promote people to do it online or by telephone. And there'll be further information about how the community can do that. But if you have something urgent that needs to be done in person, we're going to, over the next two weeks, offer opportunities for appointments. How that is by different functions, that will be more forthcoming, because I think the department heads have to figure out what makes the most sense for their departments to keep their employees safe. And that will be information we'll try to get distributed out to the public as soon as possible. But I think the, the key message is you will have access to government still. We're just trying to figure out ways how to do that, do it well and efficiently in this unknown territory. So the important thing is keep checking the website, because there'll be a lot of updates going on. And maybe what we'll try to do is do some more public service announcements using live streaming, you know, in the next couple of days to update people about how things are handled, being handled operationally here in town.
Great idea.
Okay.
And, and the message to department heads, correct, is that to minimize in-person interactions as much as, as much as possible, right? Within it, but it's their discretion, I mean, based on the understanding of their own department. So keep this going, but try to minimize in-person.
Right, absolutely. Okay, good, so are we good for adjournment, Deb? Any other comments, or?
I just had a final thought. I mean, this, this really is a startling moment. And it occurs to me, it's frightening to some of us, it's unnerving to many of us, it's probably unsettling to all of us. It seems to me we have a, a great responsibility to manage fear. When I say us, it's not just town officials and leaders, it's individual citizens and parents. I think we all have a responsibility to, to maintain our sense of community and caring for and caring about each other. So I would urge us all to be informed and stay calm and recognize we're all in this together.
No, I think, I think those are important words, because, you know, it is, it is putting a lot of us now to be, take responsibility for our own actions, but also recognize we're part of a community and we should be doing things together and not going forward. So thank you for sharing that, Al, because I think we sometimes forget that we get caught up in the operations, we get technicalities, which is what my job is to do. But this is really, you know, our lives, our day-to-day lives are being affected dramatically by all of this, and so.
One other thought, though, just to build on what Al just said, and not to pile on, but a lot of us are on social media, and seeing the commentary that's out on social media. To Al's point, let's really focus on operating as one community and caring about each other. I think there's a lot of, I'm noticing a lot of judging of parenting styles or decisions that individual families are making. That's their decisions until it's being governed. So let's respect each other's decisions as we go through this process and, and focus on safety and caring and peace.
Wise words as well, Scott, thank you. Erin or Bruce, would you like to, any final comments?
No, no deep thought here, but I just wanted to say thank you to Art and any other of the town employees who were able to, to get this live stream, this meeting livestreamed last minute. I appreciate, I appreciate the effort.
Yeah, no, that, that absolutely, and for, just in general, thank you to our town employees. These people have been working around the clock, trying to make things work better for the community. And they're very dedicated, and I've just been, I think everybody's rising up to be their best today. Just know that, that people are really working hard.
Don't forget our cable access.
And, and our, and our cable access volunteers, Abby, who has been a rock star by pulling this together. And you will probably be tapping into her more. And one thing, thought I lay out there, is we're gonna need some more volunteers possibly who, to do this type of live streaming through the Cable Access Group. And so I would suggest if you have an interest in that, a lot of college students or home for spring break and interested in helping out, so we could perhaps do more meetings going forward, email MadisonCableAccessTV to, you know, let them know you're interested in helping out. Because even though we're kind of declaring this emergency, we're gonna still try to hold as many public meetings as possible and reach out to the community. All right, everybody good?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah? Yeah?
I'm sorry, just one last thought, because you're streaming live and a lot of our employees are watching this. And I know we're gonna have additional communications going out, but at this point in time, we're having all employees plan to report tomorrow for work and then kind of scale back or do what we need to do from there.
Yes, yes, yeah, everybody reports, and then we'll come up with the who can work remotely kind of strategy, which I know people have been thinking through, and so we'll sort some of this out tomorrow. Okay?
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.